Good evening and welcome to the October 23, 2018 Millis School Committee meeting. My name is Stephen Catalano, I'm the Chair. I'm going to do a roll call. Carrie Roach, Secretary, is absent. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Mark Conroy.
Denise Gibbons.
Here.
Teacher rep Bernadette Lindgren.
Here.
Is here. Student rep Drew O'Reilly.
Here.
Is present. And the superintendent Nancy Gustafson.
Here.
Okay. Jody, has anyone signed in for open session?
Davis.
We almost had someone for open session. We're going to make it an agenda item at the next meeting. We only have one action item this week, and that's the consideration to approve the October 9, 2018 school committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Jack.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the school committee meeting minutes from October 9.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I failed to mention that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee, and all times on the agenda are approximate. Okay. Student rep Drew, do you have any report?
I do, yes.
Okay.
The Millis Boys and Girls varsity soccer teams have both made the playoffs. The chemistry 2 class is going on a field trip to Clyde Brown tomorrow to conduct experiments with the 3rd graders, and seniors are beginning to submit their applications for early deadlines.
Excellent. Thank you, Drew. Teacher, teacher rep.
The inaugural Millis Athletics Hall of Fame will induct a class on Saturday, November 24th at 6:00 PM at the Medway FFW. Tickets are available. Clyde Brown during the month of October is fire safety month, and they are going to have assemblies with the Millis Fire Department. And next week, the Millis Police Department is hosting Halloween Safety Assemblies for all grades at Clyde Brown. And in the high school, next week is STEAM Week. The HOBE Leadership Applications are available in guidance and must be completed and returned to Mrs. Dunn by this Friday. And Mrs. Diver's advisory is looking for fall and winter clothing for teens by Friday, November 8 to be donated to the Medway Family Shelter.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to time and learning, we have two presentations tonight. One is MCAS. Joan Lynn is here, and the other one will be the High School Improvement Plan, but we're going to start with MCAS first.
So, thank you very much. I'm excited to be here to tell you about the things that are different this year about MCAS. You have a packet that was sent to you earlier this week with a lot of slides in it. I'm not planning on going over each one individually, but the fact is that I did want you to have some of the historical information that we've given in the past. I do have a correction. The packet that was sent to you via your Google account, or wherever you get your data from, had the wrong dates on the cohorts, the last five slides, so I just handed you a new copy of them. It is really challenging to keep track of the year a test is given and then figure out where those kids are in subsequent years. So, it was strictly the dates of the cohorts that were off. So, the handout one is the correct cohort one.
Okay.
And then the second one is a blue sheet that you also should have in front of you that I'm going to reference very quickly to talk about weight of indicators. So, just to sort of recap where we are, if my slides will match, if you remember, for the last 18, 19 years, we've been doing MCAS, and it's had various grade levels that have been affected in the past based on when the tests were given. But it is now being referred to as the old version is the legacy test. The legacy test is still all of our science, so grades 5, 8, and 10, science is still legacy, as well as for this year, this will be the last year, for our 10th grade, I'm sorry, ELA and math, legacy. And they have those categories which we're very familiar with, advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. The new, the next generation science, next generation MCAS testing has new labels. And one of the pieces is that the categories have changed for next generation. They're now exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. So, there's a difference with that. And in addition to that, there are also different breakpoints for what those scores equal. So, in the past, the legacy test went from 200 to 280. These scores now go from 440 to 560 in the breakdown of what each of those are considered. And just so that you know, I was privy to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees newsletter that went out in October, so I'm sure you've all had that. But I just wanted to make reference to the cover story, which is about the state releasing the MCAS and the accountability results. And I thought that they did a great job with a brief overview of what the test was and what the new accountability piece was. But these standards weren't like randomly chosen as to what we should be calling them. And it was nicely quoted, so I'm going to quote the MAS-C Bulletin. "The achievement categories were established in 2017 by a comprehensive group of Massachusetts educators in collaboration with the Department of Education and designed to reflect what students need to know to be successful at the next grade." So, these were the way that they came up with those categories, and I think that that's important as to whether or not they're hitting those standards in order to be able to move forward. And the other piece too, that I would just like to comment on, was again the same article in, to quote the Mass Association of School Committee, "In general, the standards for meeting expectations are more rigorous than the standards for reaching proficiency level on the old legacy MCAS." So, I think that that's key in there, that these are higher standards. And I think the work that you saw in the multiple slides here begin to show some great work by the students in Millis, as well as the teachers in Millis. And I think it is a nice indicator of all of the things that we've been working on for so long that are coming together as we look at these. Again, I don't want to go over all of the slides individually. I'm happy to answer any one of them, but I thought I would just show you. This is a comparison. The blue line is Millis, the red line is the state, and this is the comparisons for the percentage of students that are landing in the top two categories of exceeding and meeting the standards. And all of those scores are listed right there for you. This is our ELA scores, and then our math scores as well. And I think not only are we doing better than the state, but in some of these categories, we're upwards of 20% higher for number of kids meeting those two upper standards. The 10th grade, again, going back to our P+, the legacy test, we are ELA and math. Again, you know by now that, you know, we have less than 100 kids in some grade level, so this is about, you can do a per kid estimate as to how many kids we're talking about when we're looking at these scores. 95 to 91, and 88 to 78 in math. The one area for science, this is the legacy test again. The next generation test is coming. And the one area, 5th grade, again, 62 to 47% over for the two areas. The middle school grade 8 test is the one area that we did less than the state. And one of the things that I would tell you is that, you know, the teachers are certainly looking at this, but three years ago, we made some decisions about looking at the next generation frameworks. And we began to really look at what we were doing and the sequence in which we were doing it. And one of the questions as they were doing the comparisons, and they were doing a sort of a crosswalk between the old legacy test and the new legacy, and the new generation test, as to what was still being asked, one of the questions that we had was were we caught in the middle of having changed everything, and maybe the sequence didn't hit properly for some of those kids in the middle school science. But it is something that Maureen Knowlton is certainly looking at with the Science Department and beginning to say, what is happening in grade 6, 7, and 8? And so, that is the one area that I would tell you, is the only area on the test results today that we did not fare as well or exceeded greater than for the state level.
Joan.
Yes.
I know this represents MCAS scores, but we also know that they are tied to standards in curriculum, and they're not called curriculum, but what is standards?
Standards, yeah.
Besides the tests, do we have concerns, those were grade, it's hard to see.
6, 7, and 8.
Those were grades 8.
Yeah.
So, now they're in 9th grade.
Yes.
Do we have concerns that some of the changes that you implemented, is this going to follow them 9th, 10th, and 11th? When can they catch up? Is this a question of, do they need to catch up, or is this a question of the testing? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying. Historically, that has not been the case because, you know, our scores have been a little lower in the Science Department for the last year, or two years anyway. And then these are the same kids the following year as 9th grade in biology, when they're popping up back up to 74% to the, I'm sorry, 83% for the state. So, our high school people are certainly looking at it as well to make sure there are no gaps. But the reality is that this is a biology test. I think one of the other pieces that is challenging for everybody in the state, not just Millis, but is the fact that it is a three-year test. And given the fact that you can have content from three years, and it's a little bit of a moving target when you hit the test in 8th grade, because there's a little bit of 6th grade material on it, there's a little bit of 7th grade, and there's a little bit of 8th grade. We believe our new, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We believe our new sequence, our scope and sequence of these new standards and where we've placed them in that three-year area is significant to make a difference in making sure that our kids are solid when they're coming out of it.
Are the grade 9 students here, were their grade 8 scores the year before, were they below the state average? I know that's a very, you may not have that answer right now, but that is, so if they were below the state average.
Yes.
In 8, and then jumped above the state average in 9, then we could almost expect to see the same.
Yep.
So, if you could tell us that.
My gut feeling says yes.
Okay.
But I wouldn't want to, certainly on camera, to swear by that, so, but I can look it up.
I appreciate that.
And then get back to you.
Because if that's the case.
Bob's got it.
Well, I don't have the numbers, but I'd also say that it's a very different test. High school, the science test is subject-specific. In the middle school, it's a general science, as Joan said, it's over the course of three years, physical science, life science, all these different things. When they get to high school, it's subject-specific, so they're very, they're two very different tests.
Two different tests. But our kids do well on the biology test, I can tell you that.
But the buildup through middle school is preparing them for high school science?
To a degree, yeah.
To a degree.
It's more, the high school test is more focused on a single subject.
Okay. All right.
So, historically, just, they've done well.
Okay.
Irrespective of how they did in eighth grade.
Okay. All right.
The other piece too, is we don't offer it here because we don't have the sequence of it, but you can take the science test as biology, chemistry, and technology. You can pick your choice.
Okay.
We don't have enough students in either one of those other categories that would be prepared to take that. So, some high schools, their science test is really a chemistry test. So, we just, we have ours take biology because that's the sequence in which we offer the classes.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'm happy to look that up for you, Steve. Again, we've talked about growth, and again, just as a reminder, growth is expected to be between 40 and 60%. And you may remember that we had a reset year last year in which the new test for grades 3 through 8, we couldn't compare. We could not compare the data because it was like totally apples and oranges in doing that. But last year, they were able to convert the growth scores for us, for us, so therefore we do have some growth this year. Growth is individual students compared to like students that got the same score before, and then they average all of them to get your growth percentile. Does that make sense?
Do you put them in a cohort?
Well, it's all kids in the state of Massachusetts, yes. So, they pick out all the kids that had a like score last year, and they estimate as to where they're going to fall this year between 1 and 100. And that's how they get their growth. So, every student gets an individual growth, and then all of our students are added together and then averaged to get what our growth is. So, growth is expected to be between 40 and 60 each year. And again, if you'll take a look at those scores, we are significantly above them in grade 4 ELA, as well as grade 7 ELA, 40 to 60 being the band we want to be in. Grade 4 is 68.3, so we are above the expected growth in 4th grade and 7th grade. They're all within the range.
So, that means the expectation is that 40 to 60% of the students will, their scores will improve?
No. It's to say that where the student was last year in the score, that the student got the previous year, he's compared to, or she is compared to all of the students that got that same score. And then where do they fall in the trajectory of their next one, their next year's test? So, they begin to look at, you can, where you are compared to others that had your same score.
So, what's the range? So, explain what the range 40 to 60 is. What does that mean?
The range means that that's where we would expect students to fall within that range for growth. So, if you've got 0 to 100 for where they could land, then we're expecting them to be right in the middle, that we want them to be right there. You could have a student who's on the high end, but you could also have a student who's on the low end. You wouldn't want the kid to, the student, not to have grown in that, in that range.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Another, another.
No, it does, I'm sorry. So, use 0 to 100.
Yes.
Explain this. So, someone gets a 20.
Okay. So, last year, you take the test and you get a.
Or whatever number you reason.
450. That's your score for 450.
Okay.
You, as a 450 on your test, are compared to all of the other 3rd graders in the state of Massachusetts that got 450 on that test. And then what is the expectation for what you will get the following year? So, they start looking then, what was your score this year? Were you still a 450, but it's a test that's a year older, and you know, it's a harder test because it's the next grade level? And so, where did you fall in range compared to all of the other kids that took that test?
So, 450 using 40 to 60, what's the expectation? Where, someone getting 40 more points, 490 or 500?
No, they're two different, they're two different scores. So, but what happens is you, all of those kids that got 440, 450, for the example, they take the test. Then they look at the scores they got, and they rank order them, from the state rank orders them, from the highest score to the lowest score.
Yes.
So, that we're comparing like kids on the like test. And then they begin to look at how many of them had the range in which they could grow in. So, if 50 is the midpoint, you know, how many of them were below 50? How many of them were above 50 between that? And so, then they can make a comparison between where they grew. You could get a really high score, but not necessarily have a good growth score. So, you want to be able to have both. You want to have a good score, and you want to be able to have a growth score of at least 40. Because what we don't want is to find out that you did well on the test, but we didn't challenge you to get, you know, to grow compared to the other kids that had that same score.
So, the 450, I'm sorry, I'm still not getting it. So, for the 450, what is a 40 growth? What would that mean next year?
You can't compare the two because you have to be able to look at the range of what the kids scored. You have to look at, am I not doing a good job explaining this?
No, it's probably me.
So, you have to.
No, it's, I think it's a tough concept.
Yeah.
Because, so, for example, a student who gets a really high score one year, I would actually intuitively to myself, I would say it's almost, it's going to be really tough to get a good growth score because.
To even get higher.
Exactly.
Even higher.
Right.
To beat the odds.
Yeah. How do you get, you know.
You grow 40%.
Right.
Yeah.
When, if you were, you know, whatever.
Already at the top.
Yeah.
You did better than 40% of the other kids that took the test that you got that score.
It's a percentile. Yeah, it's a percentile.
Does that make it better?
So, I did say that at the beginning. I did say you're 40, you, actually, I said the score.
Right.
Your score was 40, it's not the score.
It's not the score.
Okay. But it's 40% better than?
All the other kids that had that same score that you had before.
Okay.
Okay?
So, it is tied somewhat to how you're doing on the test, but it's not necessarily just going up by 40 points or 60 points.
Correct.
It's compare, okay.
It's not the score.
Okay.
It's the comparison between the other kids that had that same score as you did.
Okay. So, are we okay here?
We're great.
Okay, that's fine.
We are great.
Next slide. Next. Joan, remember, your time. You're losing time.
I'm not taking credit for that.
I just had one read, Joan, sorry, I had to ask. And maybe you're, that's the 3, 3rd grade.
That's the other piece that I have to explain to you.
That's the average.
So, the other piece that's different about here in the next generation MCAS is the fact that in the past, you were compared to like schools, and every town had their schools set up differently. We choose to have a pre-K through 4 school, we have a 5 through 8 school, and we have a 9 through 12 school. If you go to the next town over, they may have a 3, 4, 5 school. And now, all of a sudden, that school is being compared to our school, and the grade configuration's not the same. So, the state said enough. And there's a couple other implications for that. Within those grade bands, if you had less than 20 students in a particular reporting category, like special needs or low income, if you had less than 20, you didn't count. But if you were in a bigger school that had all of that, now it's a total of number of kids. You could have been, on the accountability stage, you could very well have been, you know, receiving a score that was different from your next-door neighbor simply because of the way the buildings work. And you go to a city that has 20 neighborhood schools that are, you know, K-5, or K-8, or whatever, it wasn't the same. So, now what they have is 2, and actually, that's the other piece of paper I handed you. It's the blue one. And basically, you have non-high school schools, which is 3 through 8, and that's what this is. So, 3 through 8 was the average up here of all of our other scores that put us at 58.3 for growth for average for grades 4 through 8. And the reason it's 4 through 8 is 3rd grade doesn't count. You can't have a growth score because this is the first time they took it. So, that's our average. Again, we're trying to get between the band of 40 and 60, and we're at 58.3 for our 3 through 8 average.
Average.
Okay? So, now we have high school, 9 through 12, regardless of what your buildings are set up like across the state, and we have non-high school, which is grades 3 through 8, and now they're clumped together. Okay?
And the other, just thing before we move on, I want to mention here and in the next slide for math, is where we have double the amount of time, for example, kids in grade 7 have double blocks of English, it shows up in our scores. It's excellent to have almost 70% growth there, 68%. Historically, grade 4 has always been strong for quite a few years, but 7th grade here, extremely strong. Overall, it's great growth. And you'll see in the next slide, where we have double math in 8th grade, it shows up in our growth, very, very strong performance.
And again, this slide is the same, mimics the other one. It's the blue scores of the individual grade levels, the red score at the end is grades 3 through 8. Okay? And here's our high school, ELA and math. Again, we want 40 to 60. We're at 54.2 for ELA and 60.6 for math. We don't get a science one, and the reason we don't get growth in science is it's not given every year. So, you can't really hold over tests from grades 5 through, to 8, and then from 8 to biology. So, we don't get a growth score for science. So, again, I'm happy to talk about any of these, but I don't want to go and continue to just go over these.
What else would you want to highlight for us?
I think what I want to highlight, before we get into the cohorts, because I do think that that's the bigger one, the accountability is different this year, and I think that that's a key piece for everybody to understand. You know, we've had 20 years of interpreting these the way people, whatever way you want to interpret them, and we get caught up in the comparisons between other districts, and we get caught up in comparisons year to year. And I think one of the pieces that the state has realized is that all towns are not alike, and so that's why they've been looking at some of those pieces to say, 3 through 8, we're no longer going to be looking at individual buildings, we're going to be looking at 3 through 8. What they also looked at was the guidelines that also went through the federal government, and one of the pieces was sort of the weighting indicators of what's going on. You might remember in the past, we were given a level, we were a Level 1 district, or we were a Level 2 district. Those were determining which school districts in the state of Massachusetts needed to have some potential interventions by the federal government or the state government to be able to set them on the right path. And those schools got a whole bunch of support through the state, and those were the Level 5 schools. We always bordered on Level 1 and 2, and the reason being is that we were given categories. And some of those categories were special needs, some of them were poverty, some of them were, would have been in other districts, ELL. We don't have an ELL population that's significant enough to make a difference. But what the state finally said was, again, let's get to sort of fair and equitable for everybody, is, again, if you're, you've got all neighborhood schools, you may have a very significant population of any one of those categories, ELL. I'm distracted by you. So, anyway, we may have very different populations in any of those categories based on school configurations. So, the state said sort of enough, let's continue to figure out what's fair for everybody. So, now what they've done is the, one of the indicators is the lowest 25% population. So, regardless of where you are, everybody has a bottom 25%. So, those become the students that we're looking for as far as closing an achievement gap. It's no longer about your sped population and comparing it to your general ed population. It's no longer about your poverty and comparing it to your regular district. It's the bottom 25%, regardless if you have other factors in that. So, I think that that's a key piece that everybody's going to be looking to improve. And we have to be careful that we're talking about raising the floor as opposed to lowering the ceiling, because we don't want to close the gap by having a lower ceiling than we do with raising the bottom 25. So, that has been a key piece for us to look at. The other piece is that we are no longer having levels, they have been disbanded. We are now using similar categories of meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, not yet, and you didn't meet your target. And that's what this piece of paper's about, and I thought that this was a key piece for everybody to know. So, if we look at the top slide, it's the non-high school slides, which would be grades 3 through 8. And this is how schools now will be, or districts will actually be rated, and I want to be careful about that word because it's how they're determining whether or not school districts need some support. But there are four things that go into this for every school and every district with 3 through 8 in it. It's achievement, and if you go over, achievement is for ELA, science, and math, and it's based on the scale score, which was that 440 to 560 score. And if you have ELL students in your district, and you have more than 20 in a particular configuration, then the score, this would be weighted 60%. We don't have enough ELL students in any particular category. We have the 18 of them spread out across the whole district. So, for us, achievement is going to count for 67.5 because we are considered non-ELL. And if you look down a little further, the dark blue spot means that they've taken that out. The goal is to get to 100 at the bottom, 100%. So, for us, we're looking at achievement being rated as 67.5% of our total. We're looking at the growth score, they're getting into the growth percentile, and for us, that's going to be weighted at 22.5%. And the additional indicator is brand-new for us, and it's called chronic absenteeism. It's brand-new for the state of Massachusetts. Chronic absenteeism is defined as students who are absent 10%, no longer number of days. It's not about saying you're, 10% of a whole school year would be 18 days, but 10% of the month of September is 2 days. So, you could be considered temporarily chronically absent in September if you were absent 2 days because there are 20 school days in the month of September. The goal is that we all know, we, students cannot learn if they're not physically present. So, if they're absent, then we need to be able to look at that and be able to figure out what's going on and to do something about it. We historically do not have an absentee problem when you look across the board. We're about 94, 95%? We're about ninety-four, ninety-five percent?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five percent. But what we need to do now is go and look, instead of saying ninety-five percent of our students, fourteen hundred of them, we need to now dig down and figure out, is it individual students who are out multiple days that could get us to that point? So the idea is, what do we do for our, our culture? What do we do for our relationships? How do we get those kids that may fall into this category physically present in the building so that we can then work on the learning and the teaching?
But, so on that, are they actually, what, what are the periods of time that would be? I mean, kid gets a flu, they're out for two days.
Absolutely, right.
So to do that on a given, to rate it every month or to expect action on a monthly basis is fucking a list.
They're looking at it from a year perspective.
Okay.
We need to be looking at it more closely, at a more granular level. And that piece is, because you don't want it to be five unexplained absences in September and four unexplained absences in October and two in November. So it's going to be able to have us focus a little bit more on the specifics. So eighteen shouldn't be what we're looking at for the school year. But the reality is, it can sneak up quickly. And there are exemptions. So illnesses, you have tonsillitis or you, you know, whatever. You could be gone for, for two weeks easily right there, you know? So, so there are exceptions to that, but it causes us to have pause and to look at that.
Joan, of the lower twenty-five percent, and you may not know the answer to this. What percentage of those lower twenty-five are connected to tiers of support?
I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. But I would tell you that of all of the data we've been working with, with our tiered systems, that none of them have been surprises to us.
Sure.
Okay? So, and, and that being said, is that, um, the tiered system of support as well as the potential for students being on IEPs, so all of that kind of meshed together. So there were no surprises for us to look at the twenty-five percent and say, this is where they fell.
It's fair to say that if you're in that lower twenty-five, if you're not connected to tiers of support or an IEP, that they would be brought into that mix.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Every district has twenty-five percent, a lowest twenty-five percent. So theoretically, the district, a district could have everybody be, um, meeting standards, meeting expectations, but be on the lower end of that.
Absolutely, yeah. In our case, we knew exactly who these kids were. They were no surprises for us. But Nancy's absolutely correct. Your lowest could still all be in that meeting expectations. If you have a really high performing grade level.
Were they?
They weren't. But, um, but in some of these pictures and some of these slides that I've shared with you, there's one or two grade levels that have nobody in the bottom category. So we've got them all in the, the top three. And so there's some of them that, um, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but we can go through.
So what are the, what are the expectations? So on that twenty-five percent, that bottom twenty-five percent you look at, again, every year you have to have a bottom twenty-five percent. So what is it, what does it mean and what do they look? So this year's twenty-five percent, are they, is the expectation that there's some higher degree of growth level or, or achievement? On that, those, we only have a hundred kids in most grade. So those twenty-five kids, uh, you know, you look at that and it's measured, how did we do with that bottom twenty-five? But then the next year.
It's a different.
It's gonna, you know, maybe it's a twenty, twenty are the same, but, but at the same time, they all could have a higher score. There could, you know, what is the expectation of what? Because at the same time, they could be the bottom twenty-five, but kind of again, unless the other seventy-five aren't progressing, you know, are they supposed to leap? And therefore, an argument that the top seventy-five percent doesn't grow because we're, we need to get the bottom twenty-five? So what is the expectation of what we do with that bottom twenty-five percent?
Our expectation is to certainly look at the specifics of the individual students, but what those twenty-five students, what their makeup is, what's their DNA? And then for us to look at what are the areas in which they have to grow. And so for us, it becomes, for ELA, for math, for science, it becomes tiered systems of support. For some of it, it might be social-emotional that's preventing the academics to be happening. So the social-emotional kicks in, that we can then work on what's preventing the academic learning from taking place. So those are two of the areas that we'd be looking at. In addition to that, it's, it's all of those other pieces that we still looked at before when they were just labeled something different from the indicators. But how do we begin to identify the areas of their gaps? Like what is missing either foundationally at the Clyde Brown School that they just haven't gotten yet that then's an impact? But how do we support them with extra remediation? But at the same time, not losing sight of the students that need the extensions, on the other hand? Because I think that's your other question, is how do you get that top group also to continue to grow? Is that what you're?
Yeah, but also, and, yes, down the road, like, there's that, that piece of it, but it's, what is the, I guess, what is the, what is the expectation for that twenty-five? Because we can, you focus and you identify all that on the twenty-five percent, and you get them to grow. But if everybody else grow and they're still the same, and they're still the bottom twenty-five, from the outside looking in, I could see people saying, well, you haven't done anything for your bottom twenty-five because they're still your bottom twenty-five. So what is the, what is the, whether it's the state, who are the regulators that are going to come in and evaluate the school? What is their expectation of what this bottom twenty-five percent is supposed to do? What are we, where are they supposed to get to, to say that we've, as a district, succeeded or not on, on moving the dial for that?
So we used to have composite performance index, and I think that's your, what are the state's expectations for improvement? As a district, they give us a rating, and we're partially, um, what's the rating? Partially meeting expectations. So, um, the, from the state's perspective, how do you get to meeting expectations instead of partially?
I, I didn't make copies of these for you. I can certainly give them to Jody, and she can get them out to you. But we have, um, district profiles. It's the official accountability reports, and they're given for each of the schools. Even though I talked about the three through eight, we still get them by schools, and we also get them by district. And so what happens is that they set a target for us. And the target is based upon, um, the indicators that we just talked about. And the goal is for you to get to the target of a seventy-five. And that's the standard for everything. And so then we're figured out as a rating for that group, not as individual students in that twenty-five, that bottom twenty-five. But the group is considered as how we can then meet that. And so for this year, the middle school met their target. So, and the district, we were at sixty-five percent. Again, we're aiming for seventy-five. Sixty-five for Clyde Brown. We were, I'm sorry, for the district, we were at, um, fifty-eight percent. So we were partially meeting for Clyde Brown. We were at seventy-five. We met the target for the middle school. And for the high school, we were at thirty-four percent. So in looking at those pieces, where are we with all of those? And how do these indicators play a part in that? So they give us a target, and that's what we're aiming for, is to hit that target. And it's based on a lot of these. So we could improve for some students in the achievement, maybe not the growth, but they're weighted differently and in the end. So in this particular year, we were, um, for, for achievement, there was a possibility of getting twelve points for the way they broke them down. And so then you're rated on the numerics that come along with all of the scores and everything else that go with that. So I will pass these along to you. I'm happy to talk about them in more detail if that's helpful. But they do give you some, you know, definitions and descriptors of what they're looking for. But, but I'm happy to pass them along.
That'd be great, thank you.
So that's, that's what we're aiming for. We're aiming for seventy-five. That's our target for each of them. That also is helpful because that's a standard now. In the past, it was a moving target. Some years, we aimed for fifty percent because it was based on your previous scores and how you grew and how you moved on. So this is at least a standard. So the, the last piece I'd like to talk about, and then I'm happy, these are all the forms you've seen before. These are just right off the Department of Ed website with the comparisons. We've talked about DART in the past, and just so that you, you know, also, I wanted to let you know, they have not, the state of, the Department of Education has not updated the DART district comparisons per district for two years. Bob's going to talk to you a little bit about DARTs in a few minutes. And high school DART towns are different than our district towns because of the way they do the comparisons. So, so Bob's got a couple of schools that aren't in ours. And part of it has to do with like regional schools, you know, like a Dover Sherborne, for example. Has a Dover, it has a Sherborne, and then it has a Dover Sherborne. And depending upon the numbers of students, that may be a comparison that we have, it may not be. So, but that's an example of how they're different. So, um, what I, what we did put together was our DARTs. And again, for just a visual, the black is the state on here, and the red is Millis. And this is where we compare with all of the districts, the K to twelve districts that were in our DART in two thousand and sixteen. And then there were a couple that we've compared to in the past, so I included them in this, this map. Again, our goal is to be as far to the right as we possibly can. And what I've, what we are noticing and what we're really very pleased with is our students, as well as our teachers, is to how we're making those movements over to the right. When you're looking at ELA in fourth grade compared to where we are of the state, as well as all of these towns that there are similarities between. Our fifth grade math, as Nancy mentioned, double block of math again. This is where we're seeing some significant growth when they have ninety-eight minutes of math in a day. We are far, oh, sorry, we are far over to the right in these comparisons with DART. Sixth grade.
Can you go back to sixth grade?
Sure, yeah.
Are we doing double math in sixth grade? And if not, should we?
No, we do double ELA in, in sixth grade. We do double ELA.
It's a one of the lab both, so we have to choose ELA or math for. So sixth grade has double ELA, seventh grade has double ELA, and, and eighth grade is double math again.
So seventh, so seventh grade has double ELA. So you can see the results in seventh grade, but not in sixth. So if you look at the seventh grade, you're second to the right.
Yeah, exactly.
So what's happening in sixth?
Well, I would tell you, and I don't have the comparisons for last year, I would tell you, since we went to the double block, we changed it two or three years ago in which we took the hundred kids that are in there, and we had each teacher teach fifty of them for the double block. Previous to that, they were all seeing Molly Cicardo for literacy, for literature, and then they were seeing Mara Robinson for skills. And we felt that that wasn't hitting it on the mark. So we took the fifty kids and we followed the same model. We had in the fifth grade math, as well as in fifth grade, um, eighth grade math. And we gave each teacher fifty kids for both and said, work on the skills and the literature together. And that was the difference. But that is a jump once we've made that piece from where we were previously to that. So it's not as high as the seventh grade, but it's definitely moved up.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just had a question, Joan. Do we, do we, do we have a way that we could track like kind of trending year over year for how we, how we're progressing?
On MCAS? Yeah, the dilemma we have is that last year was a reset. So you can't, you can't compare the, the tests, you know, as far as the scores were concerned because they were different, they were different tests.
But from this, yeah, but from this point forward, so I would be really curious to see, like, as I look at these DART slides, year over year, how are we in the DART? And how are we, like, what, what do the scores look like from the previous year and forward? So we can just kind of see how we're trending?
Absolutely.
Even like within the DARTs or even within what the levels are, so from the growth and all of that, so.
So, so, yeah, so it's really hard. In fact, the state has been pretty careful to tell us, don't go back, you know? Start from this point forward and moving forward with the new, the new next generation tests. But we can do all of that as we keep going.
Okay, great.
The challenge comes with the towns that you're comparing yourself to, though, you know? Like I said, since two thousand and sixteen, DART has not been updated for towns. So if we.
So, so.
We can keep these towns.
Yeah, right. Until, and then when they change them, then we start back at square one.
We just don't know if the dynamics in those towns have changed. But yes, we can absolutely look at them.
Similar to the past, prior to last year, we used to do three-year rolling averages and trends because that also levels out, since we're a small district, one, one student is sometimes more than one percent. So we will continue as we go forward to, to do those rolling averages once now that last year was the reset.
Joan, can you go to percentage of P plus grade eight science?
Yes.
What's happening there?
That was the, that was the test I was talking about earlier. So we were not, we did not fare well over here on the science one. That was the one that I showed you in the beginning, where the state average, I believe, was thirty-four, and we came in at twenty-five. So the, from the, one of the original slides, Steve, beginning. And so that's, that's our question as well. What is going on, you know, as far as?
Something is going on there.
Did, did we jump the gun? And did we, as far as, um, you know, rolling out the new standards for each of our grade levels and where we stood with the, the comparison of the test?
And this year, the tests will be, um, eighth grade science tests will be on the next generation standards?
Yes. That was the last time they were doing a comparison. This year's, this past year's test and last year's was a combo. It was a combination of what was on the legacy, well, the old frameworks, the two thousand and six frameworks, as well as the two thousand and sixteen frameworks. So it was a combo, and they were asking for questions on both of them.
But the science GLC is already tackling it and analyzing it in depth and along with Joan and Maureen. It's something we are not happy about, and we'll look into what's happening.
One of the things that we came up with was that we felt that we had a lot of zeros on some of the open response questions, and we wanted to know why. You can get a zero for leaving it blank. You can get a zero for not even getting the answer. So the question becomes, on the new generation test, you get their answers. We can see what they're answering. On the legacy, we never got to see their actual answer. So there's a little bit of chasing a question and not sure what, what happened on it. We know what the question was that was asked, but don't know if the students responded to it. But we have, we have several of them that were, we wanted to know why. I'm just going to go back one, if you don't mind. This was the, um, three through eight again. So when you looked at the whole three through eight piece, where is Millis falling comparing to those? And again, we're over to the right as far as a, a total for ELA and math. One of the, um, I did do the growth comparisons as well for those same districts, so they're in your packets. And I think the last section, which we're coming up to, is the packet that I gave you, is a separate packet. One of the things that I think is really challenging is to compare graduating classes against other graduating classes. And so what this, these slides do is to take the same group of students. So on the first page, the class of twenty, twenty-six is our current fifth grade students. And the first two columns compare their growth from the blue to the red of where those students were from third to fourth grade. So when we're trying to compare scores from one class to another, their baseline scores are different, the makeup of the kids are different, how they grow is different. We can't compare, just as you don't compare your children at home. What your, your oldest did first compared to your second is very different. The same thing happens with students. We really don't think it's fair to compare one class to the next. This takes them by the same kids. We're saying, where were they in third grade and where did they grow to fourth grade? And so you see that the second set of bars is the state. So when you look at the state scores from where they were in ELA, on this particular one, the state average is third graders in two thousand and seventeen was at forty-seven percent. We're in that top two categories. And they grew to fifty-three across the state of Massachusetts. We went from forty-five to sixty-eight when it's the same group of kids. The same thing with math going over there. So those are our third graders to fourth graders compared to the state's third graders to fourth graders. And each one of those slides is the same thing. So I think what it is showing us is that as our students are learning and growing at a grade level, how they're doing on that next level test, which is significantly higher. The other piece that I would tell you is that when MCAS tests were first designated, they were in twenty, the year two thousand and two, maybe, two thousand and one. We only had three tests. We had tests in grades four, seven, and ten. And there was no calibration to the test. Then they started adding and backfilling other tests. But nobody went through and calibrated them to say, is the fourth grade test harder than the third grade test? Is the fifth grade test harder than that? And so the advantage for our next generation test is that they were done in unison. They were calibrated together, that they went through and they made sure that these tests are going up incrementally harder tests in conjunction with incrementally harder standards as we go through the piece. So, um, so I think that that's a big piece for us to look at. Kids, same group of students growing from each year. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that one. So that's sort of the end of my slides.
So for those, we, we only have two years, but as we add more years with this next generation, ideally, it's a, a, a trajectory upward with higher percentages every year, which is, is the case now except for one class. And we'll look into the why behind that.
Exactly. So again, I think that the takeaways are that the MCAS, the, the next generation MCAS really does focus in on critical thinking abilities. It focuses in on the application of their knowledge, and it also has the ability to. It focuses in on the application of their knowledge, and it also has the ability to make connections between reading and writing. And I think our, our students and our staff have been working over the last five, six years at all of these pieces. And one indicator, just, it's, MCAS is just one piece of the puzzle, but I think that we were really pleased overall with our scores. Are there some pockets that we have to work on and we have to figure out what's going on? Yes, science of the middle school being one of them. But our pieces are, you know, we are really pleased with what our individual students are doing as they're continuing to grow, so.
Excellent, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Very welcome, anytime.
Bob, you have three minutes to do your presentation, so you may want to plan accordingly.
No pressure, Bob. And I'll get you those accountability scores to Joanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanie.
We put them on the Google. That's what we, that's what we call the drive.
And I will send you an updated PowerPoint too, which will have that individual.
Are you, was this a PDF, or could you put just two slides per thing, 'cause it makes it easier to see?
I can do it in a full slide.
If we could just do two?
I do two, too, I need less. Yes, we'll get them.
Job lot, two ninety-nine.
Future.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Catalon, I want to answer to your
Yep.
previous question about the science, MCAS scores, I did look that up. The kids in tenth grade, when they were in eighth grade, they were, they were three points higher than the state average.
Okay, all right. So we're moving in the right direction?
Yes, in the right.
So we, there's a blip on eighth grade, but they move once they get to you?
Yeah, it's, and as I said, it's, it's a totally different test.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for having me tonight, here for the high school, school improvement plan for 2018-19. I would like to start out by kind of recapping the 2017-18 school year, some of the things that, that we're proud of. I don't know why I just, okay. So over the course of the seventeen-18 school year, we did have some national and state recognition. We had, once again, we were named among Washington Post's most challenging high schools in America. We had Nick Steiner, who was a National Merit Scholarship winner, and I believe Nick's the first student in the twelve years I've been here that has won a National Merit Scholarship. We were very pleased with our AP scores. We had our highest number of kids taking the AP this year, and our mean score went up, and the percentage of kids scoring three or above went up. So we're very happy about that. We had a great year in sports, we had two state champions last fall. We had Ryan Locke won the Voice of Democracy essay contest for the region, he was a state finalist in that contest. School newspaper, The Mohawk Post, won a Superior Achievement Award from the New England Scholastic Press Association. We had Adriana Agüero Gutierrez and Julia Kraus both won Gold Keys in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. You'll see more of Adriana's work a little bit in the presentation. Shane Joseph won the Lions Club Speech Contest. Our chorus took first place in the Six Flag Music in the Park competition last April. Our youth in government program was again recognized as a premier delegation in the, by the YMCA, in the annual convocation at the State House. It's an incredible program, any of your kids in the high school that wants to get involved in that, I highly recommend it. Our kids did a lot of service projects and activities, our advisories, every advisory we have. And advisories are groups of about ten to twelve students in a grade level that meets every other Thursday with a teacher or a staff member who's their advisor, and they together for four years. So we have probably about eight or nine advisories per grade, so, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty advisories. Each advisory takes on a service project. So our advisory service projects ranged from raising money for hurricane relief in Puerto Rico, to making Valentines Day cards for a local nursing home. We have volleyball for a cure, once again, we had it a couple weeks ago, it's always a great success. We had great showing for the Special Olympics. We have, a number of our senior projects involve service. We had one project they made, Ally Smith made fidget blankets for patients who have Alzheimer's or dementia. We had a townwide Safety Day organized. We had all kinds of things that, you know, give back to the community globally and, and locally. So we're very proud of that. And we have a number of service clubs, the Peer Leaders, Common Ground, Leo, SAD, Big Sisters, National Law Society, Amnesty International, and Student Council, all did community service during the course of the year, and it's, you know, it's part of their mission. And additionally, we have, as, as you probably know, a number of our sports teams also do community service, so we're very proud of that. Partnerships with outside organizations and both nationally, state, local organizations, every year we have our Lights, Camera, Action Conference, where we host schools from all over the state and Rhode Island, and they come here and meet with experts from local media, local media celebrities, and they do workshops. It's a, it's an amazing conference that, it's totally student-run. Danielle Mannion, our TV production teacher oversees it all, but it's totally student-run conference. They go out, they do the legwork, they get the, they get the talent to come in and work with the students. We had our second annual Small School Big Futures Conference, again, an outstanding opportunity for our kids to see what happens beyond the walls of this school. And again, a great success, and at the end of it, the kids go back to their advisory and they fill out a form, a questionnaire, a survey about how the day went. And once again, over ninety percent of the kids surveyed reported that they learned something new that was valuable in this conference. And to get over ninety percent of high school kids to agree to anything, to say anything was worthwhile, is Herculean feat. And so, again, it, it points to the, the work that Riley Dunn, Mark Ardicky, and other people have done organizing that conference. We've had cultural exchanges, travel abroad. Once again, we had the Netherlands students visit, and they were, they were here back in September. We had the Veterans Oral History Project, where Dave Fallon's class and Mark Carfield's English class worked together, they interview veterans, and we have that coming up again. I believe they're coming in on the sixth of November. And Dave works closely with the American Legion and the VFW to get veterans here and the Town Veterans Agent. Our soccer teams, some of you guys are probably there, got to play at Gillette last year, which was exciting. We had some great experiences with drama. Our drama club did Can't Beat the House, and then in the spring, they did Shrek, which was phenomenal. They are working now on Alter Ego, which is another comedy, and they have a great group of kids doing that. They're probably still practicing in the auditorium right now. Looking forward to that in the middle of November. And then, of course, we have Nutcracker, and that will be, that's an annual event, and they'll be performing that at the end of this month. Kind of dovetailing on some of the things Joan talked about, we have the Milis Report card, and I, I think because, to make this bigger if I can, wow, because Joan did such a great job and had good graphs, I can just kind of talk through it. Again, we were above the state average in MCAS. In every category, the only category we weren't above the state average was in the science, technology, engineering, this is the percentage of kids in, who scored advanced. We were above, well above in, in, you know, proficient in advanced, P-plus. In advanced, we were one point below the state average in the science. I would say that's kind of an anomaly, we're usually at the state average or above in that. Other MCAS indicators, our, our growth percentiles did fall within that typical range of forty to sixty. In fact, our math growth percentile was, was a little above typical, so we're pleased with that. Excuse me, moving down to the AP data, again, we were very pleased with our AP performance last year. That Equity and Excellence rating, that's a rating of the percentage of kids in your graduating class who took and passed an AP exam at some point in their high school career. And last year, the last few years we've been having, we've, we've made it over the fifty percent mark, and last year was our highest, fifty-four point one percent of our graduating seniors took and passed an AP exam, which is college-level work, so we're very pleased with that. Percentage of kids who scored three or above increased from prior year, so eighty-two percent of the kids scored three or above, happy with that. And then that compares with the state, there's two numbers for the state. The first number is the College Board's number of all the kids in Massachusetts who took the exam, public and private. And then the second number is just a comparison with, with public schools. And so we were twelve points above the state average, public and private, and sixteen points above when you just compared us to public schools. And I know, Mr. Carmo, you had asked last year about if you just kind of could tease out the, the, the private schools and see how we compare to them. I, I wasn't able to do it for the percentage above, the three or above, but for the mean score, according to my calculations, the, the mean score would come out for the private schools at, at three point four. So we'd be a little lower than, you know, if you just compared us to, to the private schools, but our mean, we were very happy with our mean, that's our second highest mean score in APs that we've ever had. And again, this is with the most kids we've had to take the test. And of course, our class of 2018 was our largest class, so, you know, part of it is that, but I think it's also, part of it is more and more kids are willing to take the challenge of AP. We now offer eleven AP classes in-house, so last year we added AP American Government and AP Computer Science Principles, so we're excited about that. So our kids have eleven choice, AP choices here. They can also take AP courses online. And they tend to do better with a teacher here, but we've had a number of kids who have taken online and, and done well. This year, we have quite a few kids who are taking AP Psychology online. So that might, down the road, it might be something we look at offering here, depending on staffing and so forth. Excuse me. So we're, we're pretty pleased with our, our AP scores, and Riley Dunn and Mark Ardicky will be at a future meeting to give you all the, all the details and data, so I don't want to steal too much of their thunder. Then SAT participation, we had high percent of participation, ninety-three percent of our graduating class took the SAT, slightly higher than, than what we've had in the past. Our scores, though they are above the state average, this is an area we'd like to see if we can focus on and, and, you know, raise them up a little bit. And part of that is going to be looking at our math, our current math curriculum. We, we want to look to really make sure we're aligned with the new state frameworks and aligned with the next generation MCAS test that Joan talked about, that the grades three through eight are already doing it, we're starting with next generation in the spring, so we want to make sure we're aligning to that. And we believe by really focusing on our math curriculum and its alignment to the standards, that as, as a byproduct of that, we're expecting to see some growth in the SAT. And the, and the math PLC is also, had made that one of their goals. We had ninety percent of our class of 2018 attend to a four-year college, slight increase from the past. And of those kids who are going on to college, ninety-six percent of them self-reported that they were accepted to one of their top three choice schools, so we're pleased with that. Our school attendance rate, Joan talked about a little, is pretty consistent, so we're at ninety-five point nine percent. But the focus this year is going to be on that chronic absenteeism, greater than ten percent. So for the high school, we had chronic absenteeism was reported, six point one percent. That means six point one percent of the kids were absent eighteen days or more. That's a lot. Now, the state average was thirteen point five percent, so we're well below the state average. The DART schools were at seven point one, so we're lower than that, but it's still something that, you know, again, like Joan said, if you want to really learn what you need to learn, you have to be here. So we're focusing on, that's an area of focus as well. Graduation rate, we were pleased with, and our dropout rate, we were very pleased with. It's, it's the goal we shoot for every year, the nice zero, it's the one thing we like to get a zero in, and so we were very pleased that last year there was not a dropout from Milis High School. We don't get it every year, so, but when we do get it, we're very pleased. And once again, I think part of the reason why we have, you know, this kind of commitment of the kids to stay in there and to, and to graduate, so many of them are involved in activities. So we had eighty-six percent, eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent of our kids are involved in some kind of extracurricular activity, be it a sport or a club, most of them, as, as you, people with high school kids know, are involved in a whole bunch of things. And, and we really encourage that. And then, we're off to a good start this year, it's been a very busy year already. We've already had the volleyball for a cure, we've had the visit from the Dutch students, and we'll have kids going out there in, in April. We've had our faculty talent show, all the sports are underway, as Drew reported earlier, our clubs are in full swing, so, you know, a week from Friday is the end of our first quarter, so we're well into it here. Here's just a short little video that Adriana Agüero Gutierrez did for us, she's our official school photographer, she's wonderful, so it gives you a slice of what's been happening here since September. when she graduates.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be very disappointed when she graduates. She's unbelievable. And, you know, you saw the pictures of Commissioner Riley in there. He was here to visit the Millis Middle School, but we should not get Adriana to take some pictures. And then our school improvement plan for 2018-19, I believe the entire plan itself was in your packet. Just go through some of the highlights. We have four goals in our school improvement plan. The first one is to support personalized learning, to achieving student learning and growth, and we do that a number of ways. We're going to continue to focus on learner profiles. This is something we started last year that really gives teachers an indication of individual students' strengths, challenges, learning preferences. It gives them an idea of the individual kids sitting in front of them, which will help them personalize. Our teachers also do interest inventories that ask about a wide range of things, and that helps our teachers connect with the kids. You know, if you know a kid's interest, if you know a kid plays hockey and you're teaching geometry, you can really focus on how angles work and things like that. So another way that our teachers really get to know our kids, through those interest inventories. We have the social-emotional learning initiative that we've been working on for the past couple of years, you know, giving kids the skills and habits to, you know, manage and understand emotions, to, you know, have perspective-taking, to have, you know, have the tools to really make good decisions and form healthy, strong relationships. We believe that's an important part of getting kids to achieve and grow. So we're going to continue with that initiative. The math curriculum review that I talked about, the idea of aligning those math content with the standards for the frameworks and the standards that will be measured on the next-generation MCAS. We've been looking at standard-based assessment, which in the high school means looking at our assessments and seeing how they align with the content standards. And we've done some work, Joan has done some work with the staff, at really looking at the assessments we're giving and how, to what degree, to what extent, do they align with the content? And the work has been eye-opening in a lot of cases. And as a school community, we want to review our statement of core values and beliefs for the high school. So we'll be working on that this year. Also, towards the first goal, we're going to continue working on our tiers of students' support and challenge. Again, the idea that each individual student is at a different place, and how do we keep them moving, and how do we shore up the kids, you know, what kind of interventions do we use for those kids who are struggling, falling behind, or not getting one part? And also, how do we take those kids who are getting it and stretch their learning, extend their learning? We'll continue to work on that. We're looking forward to developing an engineering course for 2019, 2020, and we'll be bringing that, more information on that, to the committee. But we're excited about that possibility. With the grade five moving across the street, we want to see what kind of opportunities that gives us in terms of scheduling and space to help meet our students' individual needs. We want to continue to expand and improve our ELL instruction. The population is growing, it's still small, but it's growing. And so we want to make sure those students have needs that are being addressed. And we want to continue to work on and develop a global studies and STEAM scholars program so the kids can focus on particular areas of interest and have a unique experience that takes what they're learning here and applies it outside. Second goal is to maximize the use of available resources for improvement of student learning and well-being. Again, talking about SEL, work with the SEL programming we have. We do a lot of work in our advisories with that. We have a group of students who have been trained in, by the Game Change Program, which is affiliated with the New England Patriots and the NFL, where our kids have been trained to work with kids on what a healthy relationship is. So we'll continue to do that. And we also have the Science of Suicide Program that, you know, makes students aware and staff aware of, you know, behaviors or tendencies that might indicate that someone's at risk for suicide. And the kids are trained in that as well. And they do it in ninth grade, and they have kind of like a refresh around 12th. So that, you know, if a kid's friend is struggling, they're comfortable going forward and telling Excuse me, want to continue to utilize data, you know, all those charts that Joan has and the data from our report card and data that we collect to help us make our curriculum decisions, instructional decisions, alignment decisions. Learner profiles, of course, again, another part of this student learning and well-being. Tiered instruction, not only academically, but in the social-emotional realm. And again, Joan mentioned, addressing the student absenteeism. And the third goal is just partnerships with families, increased communication via social media. Millis High School is now on Facebook for parents. It's on Instagram for kids, in addition to our Twitter and our website, but that has proved to, you know, a successful way of getting information out to people. And we have a student, Maggie Stefano, which is working with me on that as part of her work study. So she's helping me out with the Facebook. And actually, the kids don't even know about Facebook.
We use the Google.
Yeah.
The Facebook.
Yeah. And the kids don't use it. The kids, that's for their parents. They use Instagram, and the Instagram is the new thing.
It's called the Gram.
And they will want to communicate to parents the results of the Metro West Health Survey, which we'll be administering in a couple of weeks in November. So we'll communicate that. Obviously, we'll bring the data to you folks and to parents, and that's always an eye-opening experience. We'll look to get parent input on our core values and beliefs statement and seek parent input on school programming through surveys and meetings and so forth. Fourth goal is to support a culture emphasizing personalized learning through analysis and implementation of best practices. So it's, you know, kind of like our professional culture goal. We want to continue to utilize our staff meetings for professional learning time, to talk about teaching and learning rather than talk about, you know, what happens in the lunchroom. We want the lunchroom to be fine so we can talk about teaching and learning. As administrators, we are implementing a new classroom teacher evaluation rubric that was released in August of 2018. So we have a new rubric that we're evaluating teachers with, so we're going to be working on that. We want to support a culture of respect among the staff and students. And I would say, generally speaking, I think there is a very strong culture of respect between the staff and the students. We want to offer teachers opportunities for professional learning outside the district. And we want to expand the opportunities for teacher leadership. And again, I will say about our staff, we are very fortunate to have so many of our teachers are also teacher leaders. There's no one that, you know, shows up at 7:45 and leaves at 2:45. We're very fortunate to have people who really work to make sure that they're doing the best they can for kids. And that's the end. Oh, yeah, this is the official school improvement plan of the Boston Red Sox.
So Bob, we always ask, but what do you need from us around either budget or policy? But you may or may not know, we embarked on a strategic planning process over the summer, and we're going to be working with the superintendent in Terry and all of the building administrators eventually to kind of bring you back. So we won't put you on the spot just a second, but there were all these discussions around what we need as a district and what we need in individual schools and departments. So think about that. You've always been very good at, you tell us after one lesson comes, so that's great.
Sure, absolutely. And, yeah, and I have always appreciated that, you know, this is a board that you can come to, and, you know, if the argument is compelling, the board is always willing to give a lesson. I appreciate that.
Is there anything else we need to know about what's going on? Obviously, there's great things going on, and you run a good school. Culture amongst the teachers and the students. Anything else you want to add?
Well, I just, again, I think we're off to a very good start this year, and really impressed district-wide about, you know, where our kids are at. I think Joan's report was excellent, you know, district-wide. Everyone seems to be, we're trending in the right direction. I'd like to continue. Very excited about what's happening across the street here, and can't wait to see what's next.
Anything else, Adam?
One thing in terms of this, we talked about at the end of last year, and I think I know I owe you and Nancy some time, but in terms of taking a lot of this great information and making it and getting it to middle-school parents to understand, Denise made the comment as we were looking at the report card, it's probably the best report card we've seen since we've been sitting here in terms of not just all the Greens, but gap, I mean, they're significant Greens. They weren't just like plus-one and plus-two. And, you know, how we articulate and how we really sell the high school as we look at, you know, middle-school kids, whether, you know, really in sixth grade and eighth grade, as they start exploring other options of what they want to do for high school, or even true middle-school, seventh, eighth grade, and how we get this out there.
Right, right. Yeah, I agree. I think it's an important thing to get it out there in a way that's engaging and, you know, understandable, gives people information.
Yeah.
To make an informed decision.
Right, exactly.
Good?
Good?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Great efficient use of your time.
Well, thank you. I didn't have to explain growth percentiles.
And I didn't have to ask questions. I dragged the thing out by 10 minutes. So I am guilty. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks so much, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a score of the game? Do we know? Not that?
One, nothing.
Well, is it still the first setting? Dave edited this out, so it looks like we're paying attention, please. Thank you.
I got it.
Red Sox are up.
Red Sox are up, one, nothing.
All right. Superintendent's report is next.
Superintendent has really only two memos from Terry Wigan, our business manager. Terry, would you like to join us? And one is her request for information from the school committee. The other is the FY19 budget update and financial report.
If I inadvertently glance at my watch, it's because my watch gives me updates on the game. So I apologize.
There you go. You can share it, Terry.
Okay, no problem.
As you get it, you can share it with a group.
No worries.
The big show.
First, you got the financial report over the weekend, a little earlier. We try to get a little earlier as we keep going. Let me give you a couple of updates to that. Now, again, the bottom line, as I recall, was around, and let me get to the bottom line, is around 47 and change, if I remember.
You're welcome.
And there were a couple of questions that were asked by a committee member, which I appreciate getting those questions in advance. And I just wanted maybe to address a couple of them, because they are significant, and I do have some updates. The first one was regarding the scoreboard. And the scoreboard is on its last legs, and the question was-
The outdoor scoreboard.
Your outdoor scoreboard.
Okay.
And the question was, should we be putting on the capital improvement plan? And I guess the short answer is yes. To that end, Chuck Grant actually emailed me tonight and said that we're in the process of getting a quote on that, and we'll have it next Tuesday. Now, the good news also, I guess, if there's good news about having to replace something, is the Boosters Club is actively thinking about participating in the funding of this. So it may not just be a school committee or town or public-funded operation. So this may be a shared situation, or, you know, there may even be some private funding involved. So I think that's one thing. Another question was raised, which was, I think, a very salient question, was about the maintenance, which even though I downgraded my estimate of over expenditures to around $24,000 and change, it's still an estimated over expenditure of $24,000 and change. And do we need to look at how we budget that? And again, the short answer I would give you is yes. And that is something we're going to examine in the FY20 budget. John and I have already been talking a little bit about how we're going to approach that with you. And there's a couple of different things, both in how we're going to try and look historically at the expenditures that we have, because obviously, there's a couple of things that come into play. First off, we're not, we shouldn't have. You will always have a little bit of potential vandalism expense, for example, in a new building. We hope not, but it does happen. But you're not going to have the kind of maintenance expenses in a new building that you've obviously had with the old Clyde Brown, or the current Clyde Brown building. But you'll still have those kinds of maintenance expenses in this building. So those types of things will still exist. So that's one thing, is it shifts a little bit our priorities of how we're going to spend those aspects of a maintenance budget. The second thing is how we actually allocate those funds. And I think I mentioned in my email response to the committee member, but I will mention it here publicly as well, there's a couple of different ways to do it. One is the way you've been doing it, which is have all the individual lines. And the good thing about that is you have a great deal of detail. The bad thing about that is the more detail you have, the harder it is to really budget each of those lines. It is far more typical to budget a contracted services line and then, excuse me, took a cough drop before I came up here. I didn't think I'd do that. And then to, within that, we would track sub-accounts within that one line. But again, that's something the committee can evaluate as we go through the budget process and, again, say to me, we like it the way it is? Great, we'll keep it the way it is. We like it consolidated? Great, we can consolidate it.
So I, so I'll just take you up here for a second.
That's fine.
I'm not opposed to consolidation, but what I think you should understand is that I think we have always looked at saving jobs, saving salaries, staff-first. And I think we've cut expenses around maintenance, expenses around machinery, around technology, and we've gotten better supplies. So what I don't, I personally am not opposed to a consolidation, but I think we really need to have some sort of summary sheet to attach to it that says-
I agree.
And I think we need to pay better, we, meaning the committee, needs to pay better attention to the maintenance, right? One of the reasons why the Clyde Brown is, I think, we kicked the can down the road too many times. And I think a lot of it happened long before anyone here was in the district, and we kind of just adopted the same kind of principle. And plus, there was a hard, where was the money going to come from? We can't do that with the new building, and we have to watch this building as well. So whatever makes sense for a budget-wise for your position is one thing, but for our position of monitoring and making sure we're spending money where we need to spend, we need detail.
No, I agree with you. And I think one of the things that Nancy and I have talked a little bit about, and again, John and I have talked about, we just haven't done it yet, and I don't know if you've done it in the past, but you should and we will, is that John really, or John and I, really need to report to you on at least a quarterly basis to give you the kind of more, I guess, detailed update on where your maintenance is, okay, and why different things are happening. Because that's part of what not only drives you developing a budget, but then- Because that's part of what not only drives you developing a budget, but then also gives you an idea, all right, what you did to create a budget, how is that working? How is it being administered? Are there changes systemically that we need to make moving forward? I agree with you 100%. There still needs to be the control, if you will, the accountability, better term, whether it's one account, whether it's multiple accounts. Any other questions on maintenance? Okay.
The other piece about, that the member that asked some of these questions is not here tonight, so it's separate from the budget, but we are going to add the cooling in the middle school, high school, to the capital plan.
Yes, I hadn't mentioned that, but that was another request to add to the, and it really relates more to the capital improvement plan, but that was mentioned that when we say looking at a cooling system, that does not necessarily mean air conditioning, though it might mean air conditioning in certain areas, but it more means looking at the HVA system overall in this building. It's come a long ways, and there's lots of different ways you can rework a ventilation system so that you can keep an overall building cooler without necessarily having, you know, true air conditioning in a building this size. But particularly, I know this fall, up on the second floor, there were some rooms that were challenged. And, you know, we're going to bring in some, at least one, and maybe a couple of companies to give us some quotations, to give us an idea of what we'd be talking about for dollars for capital improvement plan, and then move from there in our, you know, thought process.
As long as it's added, that's, it's just part of, it's on the list.
It's on the list, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other thing that I mentioned, that I looked at and continue to look at, and I will say, they're kind of doing this in all of the areas, but this happens to be one that I'm kind of paying attention to right now, is looking at the software line, and Jen Star and I have spoken about this, and we're doing a detailed breakdown on the software. I actually today also ran a detail of that expense line to look at it. It may not truly be quite as over expended as it appears when I look at it, and I do, I need to do a little investigation, there's a couple of charges there that may be in the wrong account. So I need to go back and talk with my people and actually pull physical invoices and say, because one, for example, is labeled consulting. Now, if that's true consulting, it doesn't belong charged to, you know, a software purchase account. Belongs to a consulting line. So not saying it's not an area of concern, not saying that we, you know, don't need to keep track of this and look at it, because even Jen has mentioned to me before this that she's concerned about, and we're also looking at ways to evaluate the software we have, because some of those softwares maybe are not as productive or as useful as they were at one time. And of course, the other thing that comes into play with software is one of the big pieces of the software line, probably combined together almost about $10,000, is the RDA software, and that will be a savings once we go to Munis, but it does look like that's still probably a year away. So we've got one more year of RDA software. Other questions on the financial report?
Just so you know, this is good that we're getting these. We've not got, we have not got these in the past. So part of this is you helping guide us on what you need from us, and you're doing a good job on that. So these are new. We usually got, I think sometimes we've got second quarter reports, but mostly it was third quarter and then fourth quarter. So this is a new, we're in new ground with you doing this, and thank you for doing this.
Okay. Well, the goal is starting in September and through June and probably July, because I usually try to do an end-of-year preliminary, you would get them monthly. I can't say that I won't come to you some month, particularly during budget, and say, can you, you know, give me a break or whatever, but I try to do them monthly because I think it's important you see them. And when I do, I have to say, and again, it's too bad the committee member isn't here, I really appreciated the email questions in advance. It was really helpful for me to get them. It gave me time to both respond to them, prepare more response for tonight, and also to do, it gives me a chance to research them. So I do appreciate that.
Just one question.
Sure.
It's more just as we move forward, kind of what we highlight, but the one thing, it's not huge, huge dollars, but the thing I noticed in medical health, so we have substitute nurse in for like $1,900, which is a function of us not having it budgeted. Going forward, like, can we just note, like, we're well under budget up in actual substitute or sub-line, so maybe historically, it's all just been lumped in and now we're just coding it a little bit better.
And there is actually a little bit of that. There is still a little bit of alignment. Again, I'm kind of working with a budget that you folks prepared last year I wasn't here, and there is a little bit of alignment. In FY20 budget, we'll be doing a couple of things. We'll be aligning budget codes, but we'll also be aligning dollars a little bit, because I think historically, if I remember kind of looking, at least in the last couple of years, you've ended up having like a surplus in your substitute line, but something like the nurses line you may have had a deficit in. So that may be a situation where, again, we're going to have the same dollars, but we're going to, you know, put them under different shells.
Yeah, because what I'd be interested in knowing in situations, you know, whether it's a mismatch, or we are spending on something that is completely out of the blue that we just didn't like, and that's not the case here, but just when you see something where there's absolutely nothing budgeted and we spent something and it was-
No, it's a legitimate question.
How do we miss it? Could be completely valid, but just a note for what we budget next year, here's something that we-
I know that both Sue and I have been looking at the nurses, so again, because we want to make sure that question is well, and I think we'll be prepared to answer that and also the other questions during budget season when we go through this. The one thing, and I know it wasn't listed as an action item, but I did make a recommendation that if, again, you folks are comfortable with the budget lines we have here tonight, that if you folks could adopt them, the same budget amounts are in that were in the September report, and this, these are the numbers budgetarily that I use for the end-of-year report. So I'll be honest, I've already entered them in the end-of-year report. It would be nice if I had just kind of a motion.
We can do it as part of the chairman, oh, actually, no, it's not listed on it at all.
It's not a huge problem if you don't do it. Just understand this is what I'm going to use for reporting purposes at the moment.
It's my understanding, we do not need to list it under action items for a motion to-
No, but it's not listed, it's not even listed under your report. We should have, we should-
Budget update. Budget update, please.
Where?
Under the superintendent's report.
No, not on, not on the hard copy.
On the Google.
Yeah, the Google, we did put budget update under superintendent's report.
Oh, wait, let me, we'll look.
If it's on there, then we can do it. I know it doesn't have to be under the-
I know different boards have different rules. Typically-
Yeah, it does.
On the one that was distributed electronically.
Yeah, it says it on that one.
Yeah, I think this is an old version.
Where is it? Okay, we're good.
Under the eight o'clock. No, no, sorry. That's what I meant.
So if we could get a motion and adopt that, it would be, it would just verify what I've already done.
I would entertain a motion to adopt the FY19 budget as presented.
Second.
Can you move it second? Denise seconded.
There's so much fun from up here.
Do you want to do something? Do you want to triple it?
Triple, triple dog dare you.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? All right.
I want to know where the art supply budget is on there. I don't see that.
The discussion is over.
That was 10 minutes, that was 10 years ago.
So thank you for doing these. All right, so now, what was the second?
The second was, I believe I was requested to do a breakdown of the staffing.
That was the request. So a couple of things on that, Terry. Thank you for doing it. And I know technically, when we send this thing over, the packet over, you could take the update, because the update was more of a working note, unless you want to, it's fine.
I just felt bad because it was like, I was so focused on, there's this group that's going to go into a new bargaining group, there's this group that's going to go into a new bargaining group, and then I get it back and I'm like, you missed the group that's going into the new bargaining group.
You were testing us, and we passed. So I requested this, and thank you, because this is the first time we've had this. And just to clarify, every employee who's not in a collective bargaining agreement has an individual contract. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So one thing, and I sent something to you today, and obviously, I did not expect it to be answered tonight, you may have, and you may have already produced it, do you have a list of the collective bargaining agreements with the start dates and the end dates? I thought something came through, but I could not find it.
Jody has that.
Jody has it, and I actually have them all with me.
Well, could we send that out so we can identify what our next work is? Because I think they're all coming due. And then the last piece, and it's not, of the individual contracts, I know there's a lot of people in here, we should identify what contracts have come through the school committee, because they don't all do that. And then we need to have a conversation as a committee whether we want to review all individual contracts. And the reality is, we're signing off on the budget, and we're signing off on the staffing, and all the CPAs and CBAs, and then half of the individuals. So we should have a conversation as we go, as we approach the budget process. And all of those individual contracts right now end, or they may not end, they may not be a year, they could be three years.
We do have the list. We'll review it tomorrow, make sure we have everybody up there.
So we can get a list of individuals and of the CBAs?
Of the CBAs. It is, I did check it the other day to produce my district improvement plan, because they are listed to negotiate the successor agreements for all of those groups, and there were, I think, four, four or five collective bargaining units and then individual administrators.
So it was on your, what was it, it was on your plan? What did it say?
It was in my district improvement plan, but we, we'll send out the list tomorrow.
Okay, so that's just to verify that everyone is either in a CBA or individual contract. We'll get the dates, and we'll get, and I guess we can just do it on our, actually, when the individual contracts, if we could highlight which ones are reviewed and signed off by the school committee.
We're not discussing executive section.
Not all, we don't do, they're right here, if I'm not-
Just the interventionists, the interventionists.
We do some secondaries. We don't need to go through all the list right now. We'll look at the list, but the majority of them do, but there's some that we don't, so we'll just try to figure that out. Any other questions from the committee on this list? This is a helpful list. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let's move to the chairman's report, and Terry, if you, actually, if you want to stay there just for a moment.
I will.
Taking things out of order, everyone received the FY20 budget process memo, and it's the run-up to the FY20 budget, and there's a couple of different pieces of this. One is looking at some of our exercises prior to the actual formulation of the budget, but one is looking at the cost of running the district, which is in different buckets from the operating budget, from the revolving accounts, to the grants, to the donations. I think, bless you, I think the operating budget, revolving account, and grants, those are easy pulls because we have those numbers, and we list them as part of the operating budget and we get reports. The one area that I think is going to be challenging to a certain degree is tracking the donations. There's a policy piece to this as well, and this is the budget piece, but all donations are supposed to come through this committee to accept the donations.
Over, there's a monetary amount, is it over 5,000, 1,000, I think?
So we just have to make sure, one, we're sticking by the policy, but we need to track all of the donations, because we really need to know, so just in this little, and this was something I did for FY18, the cost of running the district, in FY18, the operating budget was roughly 15 million, it's not 15 million, it's 17,358, and I don't know what that donation number would be, I don't know if it's going to be 5,000 or 30,000, right? We don't know what it is. But we really should be talking about, this is the cost of running the district, because we don't want to get caught up in, when FinCom looks at our budget, or the Board of Selectmen look at our budget, or the town looks at our budget, it's just the operating budget, right? It's their other costs, and some of those other revenue sources can either dry up, be eliminated, go away, be reduced, and so we may be at a point where something drastic could happen, and we're down 100,000 or 200,000, and now all of a sudden, wait a second, what do you mean it costs 17 million to run the district? You've been saying 15 million for all these years, or 14, they were getting up to 15. So that's one piece, and the donation piece is the one piece that we don't have, really have any access to. That's going to be, I don't know whether that's captured by your office or has been captured by your office, but-
Well, I think it can be captured. Some of it is.
Some of it is.
Okay, I mean, we have, for example, we have a gift revolving account, which captures the donations that are made directly to the school. Now, the issue, and there are different levels of cooperations that different districts have, is that you have multiple outside 503(c) organizations that contribute to the overall operation of your school. So you have, the obvious ones certainly are, you call them home-school organizations.
Home-school, merit.
Yep, merit, the merit foundation, you have the boosters clubs.
Individual teams.
Yeah, and all of those contribute to the overall operation to various, you know, lesser or greater degrees. Sometimes they're willing to cooperate and give you an idea of what they've done. Sometimes it's very obvious because they work through you. So for example, recently, we did something that it made sense for us to actually do the purchase, because the vendor required a purchase order, and the home-school organization actually paid the bill. So things like that, easy to track, because it's easy for us to find it. Boosters clubs sometimes historically can be rather protective. Nope, bad news.
Still one, nothing, huh?
Two to one bad guys.
And at any rate, so-
So can I, I understand where you're going, but can I cut this off a little bit?
Yeah.
If money is being given to this school or to purchase uniforms, or warm-ups, or gats, or basketball courts, I can understand the hesitancy of maybe the 503(c), but the administrator or team or advisor that's attached to that program, unit, club, sport, has to cooperate with us. They don't have an option.
True, but you've hit a key word there, is, and this is where it gets, this is where it gets, you're right, it's a management situation, we have to do a better job of managing it. It's, the 503(c) organization can be purchasing this directly, and in fact, oftentimes, we want to encourage that. Then it becomes, are we doing, as you pointed out earlier, are we managing it appropriately through your policy? Because if we're doing that, then if we're accepting it as a gift, then that means we have a dollar value to the gift. That means we can record that dollar value somehow, somewhere, and obviously, show it as a donation, even if it's an in-kind donation. And I think that's where-
We've had very few donations come through here. So that is a perfect segue to the second part of this budget process, is identifying pressing needs, preferred state, and ideal state. Okay? So one is, what are our pressing needs, right? And then what is our preferred state? And then lastly, is the ideal state. We may never get to the ideal state, but part of understanding what the donations are paying for is because they may be paying for things that we should be funding out of either the operating budget or a revolving account, and that we, and if, we should be strategic about that and look at that before, I never want to turn down a donation. The work that boosters and merit and home-school, they're doing great things. This is not a reflection by any means about that, that this is an internal bean-counting, tracking mechanism. This is nothing about those organizations, right? I know people, we all know people in all of those organizations. One of those persons in the organization lives with me, right? So I'm not going to say anything negative about an organization. I'm just saying that- I'm just saying that we, as a district, if we want to be strategic, and we want to be thoughtful about how we budget, and how we build a budget, not just for next year, but going forward, we really have to get a handle on what's coming in. One, to make sure we're following our policy, right? And then two, just to get a view of what that forces. And then, because maybe we can move, for instance, merit off of funding something, a curriculum item that we should be funding out of our operating budget, and have them fund something that's truly above and beyond extra, an extra enhancement, right? Not to diminish their, their desire to help us, but maybe it's not in that bucket. So, I think the donation piece, I can understand where you're coming from, but there, there has to be a level of cooperation from our internal people. We can't necessarily tell boosters what to do, or merit what to do, but we can absolutely request, Conjoel, to get the information from our internal people.
Well, in, in putting aside the vision piece, which I think is very important, I, I think coming back to sort of the budgetary piece, which I also think is very important, I think making sure everybody understands that there is a, a, if you will, a gross budget, and then one that ends up being a net budget, that's, that's what we think of as Fund 10, okay? The operating budget, is a very important concept, because putting aside revolving funds and donations and some of the others, let me, let me step aside for a second and talk about grants. I mean, we had a grant this year that was reduced by over 50%. Grants aren't going to get bigger, they're going to go down, and those are educational, those are direct educational resources that somehow the, the district are going to need to pick up. And if we can't demonstrate to finance committee and to the community at large what those issues are, by showing them the overall cost of operating the schools, and how that has been funded, and how that funding is now shifting in a new economy, then we are going to be in trouble.
Sure, so that's, that's pretty much the purpose of, one of the major purposes of doing this. And then, just to kind of, just to finish on this pressing needs, preferred state, and ideal state, one of it is, and I, and I left it three to five year, what it is, but at the end, the bottom of the budgetary, the preliminary budget sheet, we have, for the lack of a better term, a wish list of staff and expenses. I think we owe it, as a committee, and an administrative team, to pull all, pull several years of those and see where we are at, and what has changed, and why hasn't changed. One, it's been funded, we take, we took care of it, and there's probably a number of the little expenses, not the salaries, that we have probably funded mostly through end of year, or that it's gone away, right? So, that's good to know, because then that gives us some kind of history of how have we handled some of these, which may help us as we plan ahead. But then also to make sure that, are we, are the pressing needs and the preferred state, are they really, are we in line? Are we, have we changed something? Are we moving in the direction? So some of it's a look back, which will then dictate the look forward, right? And so, that's, that's work that really initially has to be done by you and the administrative team, and I think we've gotten good at this, so I don't think that that's a heavy, heavy lift, it's pulling the three or four years' worth of previous list is the one piece. And then lastly, those two, once those two kind of items are, I don't want to say done, because I don't think they'll ever be done, but, once we pull the data together, and we have the, the raw data, is we start to look at, what does the FY20 budget look like? And, and, and not just how we present outside of the building, but what are we, what, the whole goal that we started in the summer was being strategic. We're in a position with your expertise and knowledge and ability to do a lot of the work, that Nancy was not in a position to do either herself, or have the capacity to do it within her office, where now, this is a one, I know you're learning the district, so this is putting a lot of the burden on you, because we also had a bunch of other questions, which I think somewhat tie back to this, but this is the one time where we can kind of start fresh and do it, what I believe, and the committee believes, is the right way to be, to take a strategic approach to budget, because that is, that's our, that's our job, is budget and policy, and we want to stay within our lane, but also be thoughtful about how we help grow the district. And we didn't ask the questions tonight about, what do you need from us? Because those questions are coming, right? And we're going to ask them, and that will come through your preferred state and the ideal state. And, once again, you've heard this before, Terry, and Nancy's heard it a million times, don't, don't edit yourself, right? And so, if you want to feel like this is a big ass, put it in the preferred, you know, or the ideal state, put it in the bucket that we may never get to, but I think we should have an idea, and what we do in '20 could dictate, we start to do stuff in '21, and '22, and '23.
Yeah.
Any thoughts from the committee?
No, I think, I think it, one piece of it that we, that kind of comes out of it, when you look at, if we get to kind of the ideal state, and even looking at, well, how much of those items have we knocked off? I think we're going to find that we probably knocked off 85% of them over the course of years, between end-of-year savings on capital, one-time expenditure stuff, or finding ways to finagle point twos and point threes here and there, that, that we've, we've got a lot of them. But, I think the, the one thing that, that we probably could have spent more time on over the years, is looking at something and, and having more time and say, should we be really looking at this and finding a way to get it in this year, as a, and, and what really are the trade-offs? So, if we really, really, really want this in, what's it mean, and, and how do you get there, versus what we've done, and again, we never have extra money coming into the budget, but it's, we level staff, level service, and everything else is a hope and a prayer. And I, I think if we have a little bit more time to say, no, this really is something we really need to, okay, well, we may have to have some difficult conversations about, if we were to do this, are there things we have to pare back on? I think we've, we've gone through our budget processes automatically deferring to existing state trumps anything, and we do something secondary, we do something next, if, if we have the money, or we can find a way to finagle.
Or we sneak it in at the end.
Right.
Which, we, some of it, this may be playing off of, over the last three years, at the end of the year, we've had X number of dollars. Do we hedge that and say, we're going to take 50% of that, what our end of the year is, and, and fund this thing that we think we need in the budget now? We don't want to do something that is going to cause a disaster, but we, we have to have some difficult conversations. Or, what Mark was saying is possibly, we're not going to fund it this, at this percentage this year, but we're going to fund this this year, so, and that's what, until we have the, the environment in front of us.
Right, and, and I would say a couple of things. I would say, first off, there's no time like the present, and I think one of the things, and I even hinted at it a little bit way back in my interview, is to try and show you, well, show you the budget in different ways, but in one way in particular, and I kind of just alluded to it a little bit, the comprehensive budget, where it's a little bit more of a holistic approach than seeing all the different segments. Because I think sometimes when you can see the whole budget together, okay, and, and I really mean together, okay, with everything, it gives you a much different, you know, kind of 10,000-foot view, versus looking at salaries, and then looking at expenses, and, and that sort of thing. Not that that's not valuable and important, it is, but, but it's a different way of looking at things. The other thing I would tell you, and I just want to caution you, because I just want to temper, I guess maybe optimism for this particular year. This is a unique year, okay? You are opening a new building. There are going to be transition costs that we are both going to be faced with within this budget, but you're also going to be faced with within the FY20 budget. So, some of the things that we might look at and want to accomplish, we might have to delay, simply because there are certain things the building project won't cover that you'll just need to do. Having said that, doesn't mean you won't be able to do things, I'm just warning you, I've opened my share of new buildings, and you're going to have to prepare for that contingency.
So those, that, the building, and you're right, and we've, we've known this is coming, and those, those are the pressing needs for this year.
Yeah.
And maybe we have no ability to do anything above and beyond what, just getting everyone the cola, and the steps and lanes, and the two to three percent in expenses, but that shouldn't prevent us from having a preferred state and an ideal state.
No, and I often call it the radar screen. When, when I put out, when I put out things to principals, and I ask them to talk about what their budget requests are, I often tell them, much like you tell me not to edit myself, I kind of say the same thing to them a little differently. And I say, I don't want you to not put something in as a request, because even if it doesn't happen, in this particular year, it ends up being on what I call the radar screen. And so, it comes back in a following year.
Well, that's what we're going to be doing.
Exactly.
Three, five, three to five years.
And it's important that that happened, because, you know, it's not that these requests are not important, we'd love to fund them all right away. We all would like to do that, but we know we are not going to be able to. So it's important we get them down and understand they're a priority, and when we can do them, then we will.
And I think, to the point of this year, if it is just addressing maintenance or startup costs related to the new building, I mean, the reality is, we still may have, be having somewhat difficult conversations, because if you look at our expense line budget that we presented over eight years, those numbers don't move.
Right.
And this may be a year where we have to acknowledge, we can't even, we can't even pretend that they're going to be the same, and hope that we figure it out when it comes. We may have to add 50, $100,000 in an expense line item, which means we may have to not allow salaries to go up in aggregate four or five percent. Like, our whole four or five percent increase may not be able to sit in the salary line. So, and that's, but historically, that's what we've done, we've, we've allowed it to sit in the salary line, and then, you know, the, what we present in the operating budget is a, is a level-expensed, zero-growth, non-salary, every-line item, and we say, well, and, and then we'll hope, and we hope heat, and, you know, we hope our heat savings comes through, and we can pay for this, you know, broken window that we need to be able to fix, and that's, that's how we've mangled through. And we've kind of always just presented and said, yep, we'll figure it out. I think there, there will be people asking externally, there's no way that you can go into next year with level, non-salary expenses.
So when we were selling the building, there was a little bit of shock in one of our planning meetings, is that the maintenance costs in the new building will be decreased, but our electricity, even though it's an energy-efficient building, and heating is going to go up, it's a bigger building, there's more stuff going in there, and I think Tim Bonfati at one point gave us a number, or an estimate, on how much it was going to cost.
We published a number, we did.
We did, and it was a, it was a, I want to say it was a $100,000 increase roughly?
I think it's, I think it's a little north of 100, but yeah.
But, two years ago, when we were, it was 100 grand, so that's, we may be saving and, just trying to keep the building, the roof from falling in on the kids, to, and patching it up, or the water coming, and I should say, not the roof, but that, that savings and saving is going to have to go in to try to keep the building good up and heated, so.
You're right, I mean, there's, there's other little things, like, for example, we know, for example, we know the building's going to be CHIPS-qualified, but to do that, there are certain things you have to do. One of those things you have to do is you have to have a facilities maintenance program, okay? That basically is a situation where you have a, a way that your employees can report and, and have a, a work order system.
We have that today.
Okay, so, that's something we're going to have to pursue. Now, there are some very popular ones out there, I guess I would say, okay? And then there are some others, and so we're going to have to investigate, you know, do we go with something that is a, a sister module to something we are already using with our technology department, which might be more expensive than, you know, a lesser type situation, but still something's going to cost us some kind of money. So those are some of the decisions that, that absolutely will, will need to be made.
So I think we're, I think we're in agreement that we are approaching this year's budget, even though the process differently.
Yeah.
Or, none of the, none of the steps are new.
Right.
It's a sequencing.
Exactly.
It's a sequencing, and the, the teamwork approach opposed to you presenting in January or February, so, but, your point of, we may not have any money to play with, is, is taken, right? And that's, that's pretty much every year, and it may even be worse this year. Robin, do you have anything? And so, one thing, and I put this grid in there at just very high level. Obviously, as we go through, there will be a level of detail that
Right.
would help either new members, or others, really understand what those are, so those were just high-level, so.
Mr. Chair, just one comment, the administrative team started a little over a week ago, all of our transition planning, having, fleshing out all the areas we need to consider, all the impacts, all the detailed action planning that will need to be developed, so we're, we're doing that, recognizing that the ripple effect of some things like fifth grade moving back has, pardon me, implications for not only space, and physical, and equipment, and materials, et cetera, but for curriculum, and programming, and scheduling, and other, other issues. So we, we are starting that process, and we'll be spending, I'm sure, quite a bit of time on it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, just one thing. So, a couple of observations, so I, I, obviously, very supportive of this process, thanks for putting it all together. I'm, I'm very interested to see the past years, and what we funded and not, because I feel like we've funded a lot of smaller things, but have not been able to fund some of the bigger things. Reading and math specialists at the middle school come to mind, there are some full-time things, and one of the benefits, I think, in the ideal and the preferred state, is to keep us on course a bit, so that we identify what goals of the district are in that ideal state, and make decisions to try and chip away at it to get to that ideal state, so.
This is a building block for the strategic budget process.
Yep.
So, obviously, the superintendent, and you, Terry, only got this midday, so, I think we've discussed it enough, I don't think we need to discuss it anymore, but obviously, you guys can have another conversation, and if there's any questions or concerns, get back to me, or we can even have a meeting, but, so that, that's it for that. Thank you, Terry.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, nothing really, I'm putting strategic planning on the chairman's report, just kind of as a, a carryover. I think we just covered, I think the FY budget process kind of would fall as a subcategory of the strategic planning. District employee count, we covered, and then lastly, is the middle school standard-based reporting survey, which went out at close of business, it went out with a, even though it's anonymous, there was a sign-in tab, and that tab has been since removed, although I think at one count, there was already 40 responses. So roughly, in the three grades, what are we talking? How many, how many students are there, about 300?
In three grades, a little less than 300, but, yeah.
So, so potentially, we could have 600 either parents, guardians, or
Correct, and the...
caregivers, who could be answering that. We won't get 600 responses. It'd be nice to get 100, or 100 and a half, we're not going to get 600, right? That's the ideal state, that will never happen. Mr. Conrad, you look like you have a question?
I just had a question, if, you could just find out what, what they use for a distribution list?
What do they use for what?
A distribution list, so what, what journals did they, where did they pull from to get?
The, it went out on the listserv, I believe, no?
It went out.
It went, okay, I'll check on that.
Mark, did you get it?
I didn't get it, my wife got it, but I didn't get it, and...
It could be...
And I just don't, and it, but like, I get, I get all the listservs, and I'm on Power School.
I get all the listservs, too.
And we can send it on the listserv, Power, the only other distribution list that I can think of is Power School.
Yeah, so I have, so, and it may, so I just don't know, so it may be, but like, I know...
Check your spam flow there. I'll check, I'll check.
Mark, do you want to fill it out live right now, on camera?
I just, I just, I'm sure it's...
If I find the listserv stuff going...
If we do, I do, too.
Yeah, I don't think it needs, it goes to listserv, like, I don't think it needs to go out on a listserv.
Right, because you're only hitting a certain...
Right, because we're just...
It's three, it's only three.
It's only three, six, seven, right.
Three of the grades.
Right, right.
But it...
So it must have been then Power School. I'll double-check that and get back to you tomorrow.
Yeah, because I just, if it were only sent to three hundred instead of six hundred, that's another...
Yeah, that's, that's, that's right, you're right, it's not going all, no, no, if there's three hundred kids in those grades, there's a potential six hundred if we're going with two, two caregivers, two parents.
But only, but, but we don't know that it went to multiple addresses for each kid, that's, yeah.
But the good news is, forty answered.
Yeah, that's great.
Better than none.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That Google, as I've been saying since day one, is really helpful.
I know, you're so smart.
And then, Subcommittee Reports, elementary school building.
So as Nancy mentioned, what the, the faculty and staff has been doing over at Clyde Brown is actually going through the process of pulling inventory on what to bring over to the new school. So, they've made final decisions on all the colors, I think the, I saw the final two carpet choices, well done, very nice. So color choices are done, they are making tremendously fast progress on the school. So, a lot of the outdoor materials are happening right now, as you guys can see, and now there's a lot of indoor planning that's happening.
Are they going to be able to get closed up before...
So there's, there's one window delivery that is questionable, but they have a plan around it, so they'll just plastic it up, so that's fine. Much more important for the folks up in the Merrimack Valley to get restored back to full capacity, but that actually has an impact on the project, because we can't get the gas...
Utilities.
Yeah, we can't get the gas out here, we need it for temporary heating for the wintertime, so they have a backup plan for that. I know I've said it before, I can't say it enough, how fortunate we are in the partners that we have on the project, from construction company to project management to architectural firm, they work extremely well together. They're problem solvers, they're the ones keeping everything on time and on budget, so, yeah, so, good progress.
Excellent, thank you. Do we, I don't think we have any correspondence.
No.
Nope, no correspondence. Any school committee announcements? Okay, do we have any old business, new business? Nope. So we are going to go into executive session, not to return to open session, so we need a motion and then a roll-call vote, correct?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Milis teachers and clerical bargaining units. We not to return to open session tonight.
Second.
Motion, a motion has been made in second, and this is a roll-call vote. Ms. Briggs?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Conroy?
Aye.
Ms. Givens?
Aye.
And I am an aye. So we are adjourned, we will go into executive session, not to return to open session. Good night.